Good evening and welcome to our September 23 regular school board meeting. At this time, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome to our very first. Roll call vote. So if you see that, that's because we have some people in person. And of course, I am virtual today. With that, is there, I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda today. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Gardner.
Okay, I heard a second. We're going to work through a little bit of tech difficulties. I'm pretty sure the second was Leah, but I didn't. Could you raise your hand and tell me who made the original motion?
Anna.
Awesome. The motion by Anna, second by Leah. All those in favor of approving the agenda? I will turn it over to Kristen to take a quick roll.
You guys hear me?
Yep.
Director Gardner?
Yes.
Director Mohammed?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Johnson?
Yes. All right, agenda is passed with a unanimous vote. We have no recognition by the school board on the agenda tonight, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Bolsoni for superintendent's recognition of students and staff.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. Congratulations to the 46 District 196 seniors receiving special recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program and the College Board's National African American and Hispanic Recognition Programs. Students are selected for recognition based on scores they achieve on a national standardized test they took last year as juniors. We look forward to officially recognizing these students and their families at our next regular school board meeting on October 7. Last week, we reached a milestone in planning for the new Rosemount Middle School, which will be constructed as part of the May 2023 bond referendum approved by our voters. The city of Rosemount has approved building plans and required permits. We can move forward with the groundbreaking and construction soon. We want to thank the Rosemount City Council, the professionals in the city planning department, and all the staff, parents, and community members who have been involved in this process. We appreciate the collaboration and are excited about the educational opportunities this new building will provide to our students and to our community. Lastly, I would want to recognize our outstanding principals and assistant principals. On our consent agenda tonight, the school board will have the opportunity to approve a resolution designating the week of October 7 to the 11th as Principals and Assistant Principals Appreciation Week in District 196. Our principals and assistant principals are talented, dedicated, and caring professionals who provide leadership for their schools and staff, guidance for students, and support for families. Thank you for the important work you do for our school communities. And with that, that ends my report. Thank you.
That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is Special Communication Request. Those who wish to sign up for Special Communication Request can do so in advance, and speakers are allowed for up to four minutes in order to make their comments. As reminders, Special Communication Request is an opportunity for board members to listen. As such, board members generally do not respond to speakers. However, individual board members or district administration may follow up with speakers regarding questions or comments after the board meeting. As just for our speakers tonight, when you come up to the podium, there will be a green light in order to start your comments. An amber light will show up on the podium, and you have about 30 seconds left, and a red light. When you see a red light, please wrap up your comments. At this time, I would like to welcome Shruti Raghu to the podium. And Shruti, when you get to the podium, please start by introducing yourself.
Hi, good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. My name is Shruti Raghu. I have three kids in District 196, two in elementary school, and one in middle school. He's a sixth grader this year. And I'm thrilled to be here and have the opportunity to speak to the school board. I am here today to talk about FIRST Lego League programs and why they should be a District 196-supported extracurricular activity. FIRST is a global organization for inspiration and recognition of science and technology. They offer numerous programs, including Lego League Explorer for kids in grades in second through fourth grade, and Lego League Challenge for fourth through eighth graders. In addition to the STEM curriculum offered by these programs, they all, all the FIRST programs include a set of core values, impact, inclusion, innovation, discovery, teamwork, and most importantly, having fun. Our district's motto is "One District, Infinite Possibilities." We have fantastic support, participation, and recognition for kids participating in sports programs throughout our district. But there are limited opportunities for students to participate in a STEM extracurricular. Parents and kids are seeking a team extracurricular that promotes STEM, where kids can continue to develop leadership, teamwork, and presentation skills, and be recognized for those achievements. And we also need to encourage and support girls' interest in STEM fields. One way to do this would be to support an all-girls FLL team. There are so many proven benefits to STEM-based education, and it's well-known that introducing STEM curriculum at an earlier age is more effective. A few benefits of FIRST programs. The emphasis on the core values builds essential life skills. Alums of FIRST programs are more likely to pursue careers in a STEM field. And participating in Lego League teams builds strong connections amongst the students. If it were a school-supported activity, it would build those connections with the school as well. That feeling of being more connected to your peers and to your school leads to decreased absenteeism in student population. Within District 196, there are a couple schools that currently offer FIRST Lego League programs as an extracurricular, either through a teacher coaching a team or a teacher or staff member providing administrative support with parents coaching the team. So if you're lucky enough to live within the school boundaries of one of those schools, your child could have this Lego League experience. Otherwise, there are a few parents trying to still provide the experience, but it's very challenging. In conclusion, I'd love the opportunity to have a longer conversation about District 196 and FIRST Lego League. I'm requesting equal access throughout our district to high-quality before-or-after-school STEM education by offering FIRST Lego League Explorer and Challenge as a district-supported extracurricular for all of our kids in all of our elementary and middle schools. Parents, we're passionate, we're ready to partner with the district, work together, and we can figure out how to make this opportunity a reality for all of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Shruti. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have 13 items on the consent agenda today. They include minutes of the September 9, 2024, regular school board meeting, minutes of the September 16, 2024, special school board meeting, gifts, quarterly gifts, advertising revenue, quarterly advertising revenue, grants, treasurer's report, July 2024, personnel, Equity Advisory Council appointments, joint powers agreements between the Dakota County and District 196 for the provision of school resource officer services, service agreements with the City of Apple Valley, City of Eagan, and City of Rosemount for school resource officer services and Principals and Assistant Principals Appreciation Week, October 7 through the 11th, 2024. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a school board member would like to pull today? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Sakoudin.
Second, Gardner.
I hear a motion by Sakoudin and a second by Leah. I will turn it over to Kristen for a roll call vote.
Director Gardner?
Yes.
Director Mohammed?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Johnson?
Yes. With that, the consent agenda passes on a 4-0-4. We have no items under reports today, so that brings us to old business. I would like to welcome Jill Coyle to the podium to go over the second reading of Policy 506, Student Welfare.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. I am here for, before you tonight, looking for action on proposed changes to Policy 506, Student Welfare. This policy governs a variety of topics related to student health and welfare. The proposed changes can be found in Sections 2, 5, and 7 of the policy. They are relatively minor changes that include changes regarding the management of communicable diseases in schools, a change regarding the location of naloxone in schools, and the addition of references to Minnesota's Free School Meals program. The changes were discussed in greater detail at the September 9 school board meeting, and the administration now seeks your approval. Please let me know if I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Jill. This is an action item tonight, so before I go into comments, is there a motion to approve?
Secondly.
I got a second from Leah. Who made the original motion?
Sakoudin.
Excellent. I got a motion by Sakoudin and a second from Leah. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Excellent. Having no questions, this via a second reading, there is a motion by Sakoudin, second by Leah. I will turn it over to Kristen for a roll call vote.
Director Gardner?
Yes.
Director Mohammed?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Johnson?
Yes. Excellent. Motion carries on a 4-0 vote. That brings us to our new business portion of the agenda today, and I'd like to welcome Jill Coyle back to the podium to go over Policy 101, District 196 Mission and Beliefs, and Policy 201, General Organization.
Once again, good evening. So new tonight are proposed revisions to Policy 101, District 196 Mission and Beliefs, and Policy 201, General Organization. Currently, both of these policies contain the district's previous mission statement, educating our students to reach their full potential. Policy 101 also contains the district's previous belief statements. Tonight, the administration seeks to update both policies with the district's current mission statement, educating, developing, and inspiring our students for lifelong success. The administration also seeks to replace the belief statements in Policy 101 with the district's current vision, core values, and strategic priorities. This is a new business item tonight, and we'll come back to you for action in October. I will also note at this time that there is one other policy, Policy 406, that also contains the district's previous mission statement. But this is a policy that requires some additional revisions in other areas, and will be presented to you at a later date down the road. So for tonight, please let me know if I can answer any questions about the proposed revisions to Policies 101 and 201.
Thank you very much, Jill. For this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Seeing none seems like a straightforward change in order to incorporate our newest mission and vision. Thank you very much, Jill, and we look forward to seeing you at a future board meeting.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, I'd like to welcome Director Jeremy Sorenson to the podium to go over our elementary attendance areas.
All right. Good evening, Superintendent Bolsoni, Chair Johnson, and members of the board. We're here tonight to present the preliminary recommendation for elementary attendance area adjustments. We will start by describing process and then provide a two-part recommendation, which includes creating an attendance area for opening of a new elementary building and balancing enrollment at the elementary level across the southern portion of our district. We will conclude by outlining our community engagement process and discuss next steps as we move forward. A lot of information will be provided tonight. We're presenting on proposals in two different zones of the district, and we're providing opportunities for feedback and questions from the board at the end of each zone. So there'll be a pause during parts of this for questions and comments. We learned a lot from the secondary balancing process in 2022 and are replicating that process because of the scope and scale of the proposals we are bringing to the, tonight. These proposals span across the southern portion of the district and will affect many schools. We use an internal steering committee and multiple subgroups to develop proposals. Our goal is to collect public feedback on this plan and use the feedback to make any appropriate changes before bringing it back to the board for a final decision later in November. Our process has been collaborative, has been a collaborative effort involving building principals from the impacted schools and a diverse group of district staff. Key departments such as transportation, student services, community education, secondary education, special education, finance, and communication have all contributed to the planning. We reviewed enrollment across the district, consulted with our city planning departments regarding their comprehensive plan for future growth, and have analyzed multiple scenarios in terms of meeting the needs and balancing enrollment. This next phase of the process is critical in terms of getting feedback. Feedback and insight from both the board and community members will help refine and strengthen the plan. Engaging community partners in this process ensures that the adjustments reflect the diverse needs and strategic priorities of our schools, families, and the district as a whole. For context, there's not been a comprehensive adjustment to elementary school attendance areas in this district since 1995. Since that time, there have been minor adjustments as schools have been built or developments have been created, but changes to attendance areas have been isolated and met the needs of a specific area. This timeline shows highlights over the last 10 years in our district. Notably, there's been a significant change in the distribution of our student population across the district over the last several years, specifically growth in the southeast area of our district. So when we're looking to make elementary attendance area adjustments and using our facilities efficiently and effectively, there are some district-wide focuses in mind. First, we want to maintain optimal school sizes and provide equitable experiences for students and staff. By targeting an ideal student population range of 600 to 800 students per building, we aim to ensure a consistent educational experience across the district. This is similar to the approach used in 2022 to establish a more balanced secondary enrollments. Next, we're looking to alleviate overcrowding in elementary schools. And lastly, we're mindful of space needed for expanding early learning program, which is a directive the board provided us in June. We're not yet prepared to bring a recommendation for early childhood. However, this proposal accounts for existing early childhood classrooms in neighborhood schools. Our ultimate goal is to ensure our facilities can continue to meet the needs of all students from early childhood through elementary education. Using our strategic plan as a guide, we believe the attendance area adjustments proposed this evening will help ensure that students across the district have equitable access to well-resourced schools, aligned instructional practices, and consistent curriculum implementation, contributing to stronger student outcomes. In addition to our strategic priorities, there are a wide range of considerations we look at during the process. Consistent with path, past attendance area adjustments, our guiding principles have been to create attendance areas that protect the concept of neighborhood schools, are contiguous and follow natural boundaries where possible, allow room for growth, and consider middle and high school attendance areas and adhere to all state and federal guidelines. Specifically, the Minnesota State desegregation and integration rules, making sure that through our adjustments, we are not creating any racially identifiable schools. So now we're going to get into the actual adjustments. First, we're talking about Zone 1. Zone 1 is the new elementary school. Located at the corner of Akron Avenue and Bonner Path at Rosemount, it's located in the current Red Pine Elementary Attendance Area, just north of the border between Red Pine and Rosemount Elementary Attendance Areas. Red Pine is designated by the color pink, and Rosemount Elementary is designated by the color gray on this map. In developing the attendance area for the new elementary school, we've carefully considered several key factors. Because of their proximity to the site, both Red Pine Elementary and Rosemount Elementary are the two schools most impacted by the adjustments. One of our primary goals is to alleviate overcrowding at Rosemount Elementary while ensuring that the new boundaries promote balanced enrollment across all affected schools. This process reflects a commitment to maintaining neighborhood schools and supporting the well-being and academic success of all of our students and taking into consideration future growth from the community, from community development. This slide shows the addition of the proposed attendance area for the new elementary school. It's the purple space highlighted and circled in the above image. It encompasses densely populated areas with close proximity to the school. It also encompasses a rural and industrial area of our district that connects to neighboring district boundaries. Now, you'll see a chart attached to this, and what that chart signifies is the number of students that live in an attendance area. So that's not the exact enrollment, but it's the number of students that actually live within the boundaries or attendance area of the school. There's a strong correlation between that number and enrollment, but every attendance area has students who might choose to open enroll to another school in our district, open enroll to a school outside of our district, perhaps homeschool or go to a private school. So that number isn't exactly enrollment, but it's a strong correlation. And we, when we do change attendance area boundaries, that's the number that we impact. So one of our main goals in creating the attendance area was to alleviate overcrowding at Rosemount Elementary. This proposal reduces the number of students living in Rosemount Elementary Attendance Area from 913 to 493 students. This allows room for growth from the Amber Fields area and additional developments within its attendance areas. This is a known area of growth in our district, and we anticipate that Rosemount Elementary will quickly be within the optimal zone of student population within the next few years. It also keeps the number of students living in the Red Pine Attendance Area at 636 and the new elementary building at 635. So I'm going to pause here for any questions related to the first zone. I'm going to take my glasses off so I can see.
At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience related to Zone 1? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members?
Okay, if there's no questions now, there'll be another opportunity to pause. You can ask questions that time, and then at the end, there'll be another opportunity. Right, so. So we're going to move on to Zone 2, and balancing enrollment in the southern area of our district. Zone 2 encompasses attendance area adjustments in the southern portion of our district. These are being proposed due to rapid population growth and the imbalanced distribution of students across schools. The schools impacted by this proposal are Diamond Path in the pink, East Lake in the red, Highland in aqua, and Shannon Park in yellow. So we have a similar graph up here showing the number of students who live in the attendance areas with current and then what proposed would be. Since East Lake Elementary opened in 2017, the area has become densely populated, leading to significant overcrowding. The number of students living in East Lake Attendance Area is currently 913 students. In contrast, Shannon Park has 355 students. Diamond Path has 384 students living in their attendance areas. The range or difference between the number of students living in a school's attendance area is as much as 556 students or in whole elementary school's enrollment. This creates inequities in staffing allocations, operating budgets, and opportunities for students. The proposed adjustments aim to balance enrollment to be more equitable among East Lake, Diamond Path, Highland, and Shannon Park, moving all schools towards our optimal enrollment of 600 to 800 students. Under the new plan, Diamond Path would have 578 students living in its attendance area, leaving room to accept intra-district international studies interests. East Lake drops to 710 students. Highland will have 662, and Shannon Park will be at 489. And they currently accept about 150 students who intra-district transfer or open enroll. All schools will now be closer to the optimal range of 600 to 800 students and more capable of providing an equitable experience for our students, families, and staff. In this proposal, Diamond Path would be moving away from its magnet school designation. Diamond Path was originally configured as a magnet school. However, unlike our other magnet schools, it was not racially, it was not a racially identifiable school. It became a magnet school because of its international studies theme. Diamond Path will continue that instructional theme. However, in moving away from the magnet school status, we will phase out transporting students from outside the school's attendance areas. With this attendance area rebalancing, Diamond Path Attendance Area increases. So we'll have more students from its neighborhood while still maintaining capacity for intra-district transfers or open enrollment based on its internal international studies theme. If you recall from the previous slide, the current attendance area is 384, and the proposed attendance area would have 578 students. In the long run, this reduces overall transportation costs, and there will be no other changes to magnet programming. Additionally, the secondary process completed in 2022 has worked better than expected to stabilize and balance middle school enrollment. The only middle school pathway that would be affected by the elementary balancing is this small neighborhood of 59 students, 59 elementary students that is moving from East Lake to Shannon Park. Currently, 100% of students in the Shannon Park Attendance Area are also in the Rosemount Middle School Attendance Area. As we increase the Shannon Park Attendance Area, we pick up one neighborhood that is zoned for Scott Highlands Middle School. We're proposing to adjust only this middle school attendance area so that the 10% of Shannon Park students can accompany their classmates to Rosemount Middle School, and we expect parents would support this proposal. Even though there are district-wide attendance area adjustments to elementary, there is no impact on high school, and this is the only middle school adjustment we are proposing. Do we have questions on Zone 2 or anything that you thought of for, for Zone 1?
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Director Williams?
Thank you, Corey. Just a quick question around that savings on transportation. Was there like a value that you identified, how much that savings would be?
Yeah, transportation for our magnet students, so students outside of the attendance area at Diamond Path right now. It fluctuates each year a little bit, but it's between $400,000 and $600,000 a year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing none, thank you for the presentation. And Director Sorenson, do you want to give a little bit of information on what the next steps are with Zone 1 and Zone 2, this proposal?
Yep, that concludes the Zone 2 part. I do have a few more slides with some of the next steps and some of those things. So thank you. That's a perfect lead-in, Chair Johnson. All right. So first of all, we must want to talk about this proposal has a number of comprehensive benefits for our district. It addresses overcrowding at both Rosemount Elementary and East Lake Elementary. The proposal stabilizes enrollment for multiple elementary schools. And then we provide additional early learning space in elementary schools. For example, East Lake has two rooms that were specifically designed for early childhood programming. However, because of their overcrowding, these rooms are currently being used for K-5 programming. Under this plan, those rooms would be used for what we originally designed for, early childhood. And then lastly, we believe this proposal allows us to have improved resource allocation across all the impacted areas. And then this is our last slide, but this is our communication plan. It's shown up here. There's a number of communications going out to families during the month of September, including tonight. In addition to the board presentation, we're sending district-wide emails to staff and families that will include links to a live interactive website where families can use their address to see how they're impacted by the proposed changes. There'll also be a feedback form included in the communication, and we're encouraging staff and families to put questions and comments in the forum to help guide the feedback process. And then during the month of October, we will be holding a number of family information sessions to engage in conversations about the proposed plan. This will give us the opportunity to hear directly from our community. Once we've gathered feedback and information, our plan is to review and make any appropriate adjustments prior to bringing the proposal to the board for approval in mid-November. I'd be happy to take any additional questions you may have at this time.
Thank you very much. Are there any final questions or comments from the audience regarding the elementary attendance areas? attendance areas? Seeing none, final questions or comments from board members. Leah.
Just one question on, when you mentioned just now in Zone 2 that there would be some opening of early childhood space, do you know what that amounts to in terms of actual kiddos that we'd be able to get in?
It's not a lot. It'd be balancing enrollment across schools, so we could use some of the rooms that were designed for early childhood for that purpose. So at East Lake, there'd be two classrooms. It wouldn't technically be additional space, but it'd be trying to get kids closer to their homeschools and those kinds of things.
Yep.
I mentioned, sorry, I mentioned before that we know this is a priority for the board, and we've been investigating different kind of scenarios and proposals. We don't have one ready tonight, but there may be something in the near future that we would bring forward that would provide more space for early learning.
Got it, thank you. That'd be great.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, I would just add to any community members watching the presentation tonight that, as board members, I know, we all know that even small attendance areas adjustments can sometimes take some time to digest. So thank you to the district and Director Sorenson for giving families a lot of notice, communication, and opportunities to provide feedback that you mentioned. And so, any of our families watching, please feel free to take advantage of any of those opportunities to provide feedback on this plan. Thank you very much, and we will see you at a future school board meeting. All right. That brings us to the other action item portion of our agenda, and I would like to welcome Christopher Anyango Ropshaw to the podium to go over 2024 payable and 2025 property tax levy limitation.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, school board members, Superintendent Bosoni, as well as our public stakeholders. I am Christopher Anyango Ropshaw, and I'm going to be walking us through our proposed 2024 tax levy. As I said, I am here to discuss our proposed 2024 property tax levies, and these are for taxes payable in 2025. These tax levies will fund the school district's fiscal year 2026 operations. The cycle for our levy begins this evening with the school boards authorizing the proposed levy. Following this action, the Minnesota Department of Education will transmit data to the county, who will then compile it, including data from other taxing entities, create communication that they will be sharing with other taxpayers across the county. The process then will return to this body in December for the final certification. The property tax levy is the local community's partnership with the state and federal government in supporting the school district's mission. It is a key component of our strategic priority in ensuring we're providing the right mix of resources to meet the needs of our students. And as we begin this journey into our fiscal year 2026 budgeting process, I want to spend a little bit of time reviewing the current revenue components for the fiscal year we're currently in. So we pause here to note the impact of property taxes that they play into the mix of revenue the district receives. For the current school year, a quarter of the revenue we receive is from property taxes. The image on the right highlights the amount of revenue that is received by the three other funds, by the three funds based on the property taxes. And as you can see, the general fund receives 120 million, which is about 77% of the overall property tax. Our debt service receives 22%, and community education receives 1%. We will then discuss the key components of our levy, the referenda market value, which is used to calculate our voter-approved operating levy, local optional levy, and equity and transition levies. The RMV for the proposed levy is calculated at $26.3 billion and represents an increase of $5.8 billion from prior year. The adjusted net tax capacity is used to calculate the remaining components of the general fund, including the operating capital projects levy, operating capital, career and technical education, among other general fund items. The NTC is also used to calculate all the other components of levy related to community education and debt service. NTC is calculated at $329 million, which represents an increase of 5.4% from prior year. The median valued home in the district is currently valued at $392,000. This is based on a 2024 assessment by the county, and this figure represents a decrease of 0.68% from prior year. Together, these three components point to an increase in the overall tax base, which helps distribute the tax impact of our levy across the community. Our December presentation will include the individual impact of property taxes to the property taxpayer. For fiscal year 2026, ISD 186 levy is based on a September 18 MDE run and represents about just over $155 million. This levy amount represents a decrease of about 1% from what was approved prior year, and I would say the decrease, especially in the general fund, is mainly attributable to the changing enrollment projections for the district. This slide shows the historical progression of our levy trend, highlighting the commitment that our community of taxpayers continue to invest into our school district. Tonight, our recommendation to the board is to adopt the maximum levy for a pay 25 levy. This allows the Department of Education and Dakota County to make needed adjustments as key data elements which impact the levy are finalized. We will present the final certification back in December. That's when we will also be holding our truth in tax session hearing. I'm happy to entertain any questions, if there's across anything that I may have presented this evening.
So this is an action item tonight, so before we go into questions, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Secoude.
Second, Leah.
Heard a motion by Secoude and a second by Leah. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Again, seeing none, we have a motion by Secoude and seconded by Leah to approve the property tax levy. I will turn it over to Kristen for a roll call vote.
Director Gardner?
Yes.
Director Mohammed?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries on a 4-0 vote. I will turn it back over, I will turn the meeting back over to Kristen, to Christopher again, to go over the sale of land for Highway 3 roundabout.
Thank you again, Chair Johnson. This item has been a conversation that the school district and the Minnesota Department of Transportation has been having for a while. Beginning in June 2025, the Department of Transportation is proposing to construct a roundabout at the intersection of Highway 3 and 142nd Street. Again, this roundabout has been, we as a school district are not able to construct roads, and through various lobbying efforts, we've asked for traffic studies to help improve the traffic flow around that area, especially during early arrival and dismissal time for those students that attend Rosemount High School. We anticipate that the construction of the roundabout will alleviate traffic congestion. It will optimize operations at the entrance and also help with the improvements that the Minnesota Department of Transportation will be making in terms of drainage and infrastructure improvements in the area. This sale resolution that we're proposing this evening avoids the condemnation and eminent domain process the state would otherwise pursue to arrive at a similar transfer of ownership. They're proposing to pay for the land purchase, which is just slivers of land just to help with easement process as far as them then constructing the roundabout and allowing for free flow of vehicles around that intersection area. And again, I'll be happy to entertain any questions or provide clarification on this item.
This is another action item today, so before we go into questions, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Leah.
Second. Secoude.
Heard a motion by Leah, seconded by Secoude. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members?
So, just so I understand correctly, the reason why we are getting in front of this is so that we can avoid an eminent domain process?
Correct.
Got it.
The process they are hoping, the Minnesota Department of Transportation, is they want, if this process goes through this way, then construction can begin in June 2025. It'll take place over the summer months while students are out, and then allow for the resumption of regular service when school returns. The eminent domain process may lengthen that process interfering with our education process. The district supports it because it does present, if you've been in that intersection around arrival dismissal time, this actually we are benefiting without spending money to do this improvement.
Do we also have an idea, so how big of, are there walkers? Do we have a lot of pedestrians that use that area?
Yes.
Okay.
So there is currently a tunnel, I'm going to say about a quarter of a block away from that intersection that will not be impacted.
Okay.
They will have signage, they do not, they do not think they will have a crossing right on the roundabout because of access either north of where the roundabout currently is located and south of where the roundabout is located. So in the immediate vicinity of the roundabout, there would not be crossing that's proposed currently.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? I just wanted to say, I know over the years, this is a intersection I have heard many times about concerns from the community, especially thinking about, you know, newly more inexperienced drivers coming and going from school in a very busy intersection. So it is nice to see that the county is going to be working with us to make some safety improvements there. So with that, I had a motion to approve from Leah, seconded by Secoude. I will turn it over to Kristen for a roll call vote.
Director Gardner?
Yes.
Director Mohammed?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries on a 4-0 vote. That brings us near to the end of our agenda today. I will turn it over to Superintendent Bosoni for his superintendent updates.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. A few updates here tonight. Absentee and early in-person voting started last week for the November 5th general election and school board election in District 196. Two candidates are seeking election to one open seat on the school board. For information on where to vote, go to MNvotes.org. And again, that's MNvotes.org. Eagan High School's Fall Play is this weekend, and I plan to attend. Our students will bring to life the farce meets murder mystery comedy Clue. Tickets are still available on the high school website. Three of our high schools, Apple Valley, Eastview, and Rosemount are all celebrating homecoming this week. Eastview's football game will be on Thursday night, Rosemount's on Friday, and Apple Valley on Saturday. Eagan High School celebrations will follow next week. We invite everyone from our communities, and especially our alumni, to come out and enjoy athletic events throughout the week. There is so much pride in our community, and homecoming is a great community event. Our district advisory councils have started their first meetings of the year. District 196 advisory councils provide students, parents, staff, and area community members the opportunity to be involved in the decision-making process and help guide the work of the district. This community involvement is critical to the success of our schools. We have nine advisory councils and a few seats open on different councils. Please visit our website and search advisory councils if you would like to get involved. We want to thank all staff and community members who share their time and talents on our various councils. Last week, I had the opportunity to visit Oak Ridge and Pinewood Elementary Schools and saw firsthand what a great start of the school year we are having. Visiting those schools reaffirmed for me our commitment to our students every single day. I want to commend our staff, especially our elementary teachers, who are implementing four new curriculums, reading, writing, science, and math. I saw teachers in action with solid consistency and instruction. The hard work and can-do attitude among staff is much appreciated. One of our teachers commented on the emphasis on writing in the new curriculum, and if we think about writing as a way that students process their thinking, organize ideas, and learn to express themselves, it is a critical skill that certainly includes but goes far beyond grammar and sentence structure. I'm very proud to see the promise of this new curriculum and what it holds for our student growth and achievement this year. I want to thank all of our teams for welcoming me during the school visits, and I invite board members to join me as their schedule allows for future visits. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Bosoni. Are there any board members with items they'd like to share tonight? I just have one item I'd like to share. So as the community may have seen, one of our former colleagues, Art Colson, resigned from the school board effective the end of August. I just wanted to be transparent with the community. I'm sure many of you know that that means the school board has a duty to fill the vacancy that Art has left. Due to the election happening right now for one of our school board seats, we will be announcing the process for filling that vacancy, but the process will be happening after the November 5th election. So just so the community knows, we will, just to avoid any confusing communication about a board member election and a board member vacancy, we will be doing them, we will be working to fill the vacancy and accepting applications soon after the election. So please tune in, we will have more communication on our district website and at school board meetings when we get closer to that date. That brings us to the end of our agenda today. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Cory, before we end the meeting, can you just speak a little bit about why we weren't able to actually have those two seats on the ballot, meaning that why we are going through an appointment process versus why it didn't open up and get on the ballot?
Yeah, good question, and I can do my best to speak with that, and we'll definitely go into more detail when we have our legal counsel to be able to speak to the exact. But there are very specific, so I can't quote the statute, but there are very specific statutory requirements that we need to abide by in order to fill vacancies. And for this, again, I don't know the dates off the top of my hand, but based on the dates of Director Colson's resignation, there wouldn't be enough time to put that on the November 5th election because counties need time to print the ballots and the certification and things that come along with that. So with the time window, there wasn't enough, there wouldn't be time to have it on the November 5th election, so we would have to go through the appointment process. The law does allow us to start the appointment process right away. However, it just seemed to be quite, it would be quite confusing to the community to be able to hold an election and a vacancy at the same time. So we're going to wait till after the election in order to have a much cleaner process and then start the position of filling that vacancy.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the question. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Secoude.
Leah, second.
Here, a motion to adjourn from Secoude, seconded by Leah. I will turn it over to Kristen for a roll call vote.
Director Gardner?
Yes.
Director Mohammed?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Johnson?
Yes. Motion to adjourn passes on a 4-0 vote. We are adjourned.